Good evening. I move that this council certify by a recorded vote that to the best of each council members knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session or heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Second?
Okay. Great, thank you. We are now going to have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Any announcements?
Sure, I will make an announcement. I'll make an announcement for the My Help List contest. Entry in 150 words or less, share in writing why it's important to help people because, or list five things you have done to help someone, or how you can help someone. All students throughout Charlottesville and surrounding counties in grade categories K through two, three through five, six through eight, and nine through 12 are eligible. One winner from each great category will be chosen and win a $100 cash prize with gathering to be held in their honor. Winners will be announced on NBC 29 and alexan.com. You can enter from March 10th through April 18th of this year, and you can drop or send all entries to Jones Heating and Air, My Help List, 633 Rose Hill Drive, Charlottesville, Virginia 22903. Please include name, address, and phone number.
Alexan is always busy, so he's always got some good things going on, so, thank you.
My announcement is that this Sunday, March 9th, at 12:00 PM is the next Neighborhood Community Walk. This week, we're going to be checking out the Rose Hill neighborhood. It's a couple miles, walking around, meeting new neighbors, getting to explore maybe a neighborhood you're not as familiar with, or your own neighborhood, and welcoming new people to it. It's the second Sunday of every month, a different neighborhood. If you want to find out more, you can check out the Bike Ped Advisory Committee website. But the...
Is Rose Hill this week?
Rose Hill is this week. Next month, in April, it'll be UVA Grounds, and then May will be Woolen Mills. There's the full list on the website also. It's really fun. It's great to get out and stretch your legs and meet new people.
The best time to do UVA Grounds is like June or July when this is... It's just kind of, that's when we used to go walking by the campuses. A little bit different. I just want to express that it was a transit accident today, you know, I know that there was a lot of coverage over that. I hope that everyone is okay with that.
Last report that I got, no injuries, but definitely property damage, and definitely something to be concerned about.
Yeah. We now have some... Any other announcements? We have some proclamations, so...
So proclamation, celebration of the 100th anniversary of CAR. Whereas the Charlottesville Area Association of Realtors, or CAR, has been the leading voice for real estate in central Virginia since its establishment on June 22nd, 1925, representing today more than 1,300 real estate professionals and affiliate members. And whereas for a century, CAR has made significant contributions to the Charlottesville real estate industry by advocating for the protection of private property rights and providing its members with the tools and technology needed to achieve expertise in serving the needs of their customers and clients with the highest standards of professionalism, ethics, and excellence. And whereas reflecting on its past, the association recognizes the importance of continuing to embed diversity, equity, and inclusion into every aspect of its operations, thus strengthening the association's reputation as a trusted and reliable resource in the real estate community. And whereas CAR remains dedicated to enriching the Charlottesville community, engaging in a variety of educational programs and community service events each year, and providing its members with the resources and support they need to navigate the ever-changing and growing real estate landscape, now therefore be it resolved, Charlottesville City Council hereby recognizes the Charlottesville Area Association of Realtors in celebration of its 100th year of service in central Virginia and in the city of Charlottesville, signed and sealed this fourth day of March 2025 by Juan Diego Wade Mayer. Somebody from CAR here?
If you can, if you want some pictures or to say something, please do.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. We're very proud to be part of the community, and we really appreciate this.
Ryan?
American Red Cross Month is...
I'm doing American Red Cross, you can do the social services.
So I have a proclamation for Social Work Month 2025, Compassion in Action. Whereas people have entered the social work profession for generations because they genuinely care about helping improve the welfare of people, families, communities in our nation. And whereas this year's Social Work Month theme, Social Work, Compassion Plus Action, embodies the fact that social workers go through years of education and training so that they have the skills and expertise to transform their care for others into action that brings positive results. And whereas the social work profession has worked for generations to improve living conditions in our community and our nation, with social workers successfully pushing for Social Security, a 40-hour work week, Medicare, and the minimum wage. And whereas social workers work in all parts of our society, including schools, social services agencies, veteran centers, and government. Whereas social workers are at the forefront of pressing issues facing our nation, including increased needs for mental health care, especially for children and adolescents, substance use disorder treatment, and increasing economic and political division. Social workers continue to stand ready to assist our nation in overcoming present and future challenges. Whereas social workers are one of the largest groups of mental health care providers in the United States, and are pressing for a social work interstate licensing compact that will improve mental health care delivery in our nation. And whereas research proves the presence of social workers in schools, hospitals, and assisted living facilities improves education and health outcomes and quality of life for students, patients, and residents. Now therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by social workers, the Charlottesville City Council proclaims the month of March 2025 as Social Work Month, and call upon community members to join in celebration and support of the social work profession in this year's theme of Compassion Plus Action. Sign and seal this fourth day of March 2025, Juan Diego Wade Mayer.
So I know we have the new planet, I mean, the new director of social services here, but there's an event in a couple of weeks that I'm going to read that at as well, but you can present it to Mr. Henry.
I'm privileged to be on the social, come on down, privileged to be on the Social Services Advisory Board, and got to meet you, sir, I guess last week, and we're just really proud and happy that you're here with the city.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, his name is Leon Henry, for anyone that has not...
Oh, yeah, yes. And I have a proclamation for American Red Cross Month. Whereas during, whereas during April, American Red Cross Month, in March, we recognize the compassion of people in the city of Charlottesville, and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. Whereas the American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people and being enduring for more than 140 years, this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances humanitarian, humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. Whereas kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they set up through the American Red Cross, the Central Virginia chapter, to provide a beacon of hope to our neighbors in need. Now therefore, the city of Charlottesville recognizes March 2025 as American Red Cross Month, and we encourage all community members to join in this noble humanitarian efforts to strengthen and uplift the community, signed this day, March 4th, 2025, by Juan Diego Wade. And I'll be sure that, no one's here from the American Red Cross, right? I'll make sure that they get this, that do great work. They're having a program in a few weeks that I'll present this to as well. So we have one that I'm happy that Zion Union Baptist Church, one that accepted me when I first got here, doing some tutoring, and I see Ms. Bryan is here, she was part of that for many years. They are celebrating their 130-year anniversary, and they're having a big program next Sunday at 2:00 PM, and I know that they will want people to come at 12:00, as lunch is planned, so please come out, I know that they would like that. And it's also, also a multiple sclerosis education in wear-in this month, and we have a proclamation for them as well. So a lot of good things going on in our community, we're glad that we can use this platform to uplift them and recognize them. We're now at the opportunity for the first time for community matters, and only one person has pre-registered to speak, and we have opportunity for 15 more at this time. And the first, or only speaker is Ms. Hawker.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Hawker, and yes, I am a Charlottesville city resident. I would like to just first start by saying I am an advocate for wellness and mental health as a former social worker, therapist locally here in Charlottesville, and also in another state. I am now the founder and executive director of a local nonprofit that focuses on physical health and wellness. So again, I want to just thank you all, the city council members, for your time and dedication to this community. I want to ensure that our community does make sure that we pay attention to not only our health and wellness, our emotional wellness, but also our physical wellness. Without many of the interventions that are necessary, disparities continue to rise within healthcare costs, reduced workforce productivity, and then preventative healthcare needs for individuals in our community. Many individuals who are underserved in our community lack affordable and culturally relevant wellness programming that includes physical activities. We also recognize that there are food deserts in certain neighborhoods which make affordable produce and other resources readily available. Many residents within marginalized communities also face higher levels of stress, anxiety, and depression, which can be resolved by once again having culturally relevant places to work out and to also receive mental health resources and physical health activities. I would also ask that you all will consider your ways, the ways in which you can partner with marginalized communities by supporting free and oftentimes reduced resources, and also partnering with local organizations who provide those resources for our marginalized communities. I would also submit that myself and many others in this community want to be part of strategic planning that emphasizes how do we make sure that marginalized individuals within our communities have the resources for their health and wellness, which includes physical health as well. We can improve our outreach, we can improve preventative measures to make sure that individuals receive wellness screenings, education, and resources on the front end prior to needing medical treatments on the back end. So once again, health disparities affect not just individuals, but they affect entire communities. And so I'm asking that you all, city council, prioritize wellness for everyone within our community. Every resident deserves the opportunity to live a thriving, vibrant, healthy lifestyle, and I ask that we all work together to make this more accessible for everyone in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nicole, and thank you for all you do for the community and the city. I know you serve on committees and things, so just thank you.
Thank you.
For all you do.
Thank you.
We have opportunity for 15 other people to speak at this moment. Anyone else would like to speak now? Yes.
Hi friends, Jason Halbert, 2633 Jefferson Park Circle. I sat in on the reports earlier and was happy to hear your comments. I'm very pleased with the direction you're heading. Just a few points, and my points are myself, for myself, I work for a foundation that does work in this area, so these are just my own comments. On the solid waste, I think you do want to disincentivize the, incentivize recycling and disincentivize the bigger containers and more pickup. And I think your comments were all right on point, and I don't want to pay or subsidize other people. What I would do is index it, it's a core service for the city and the citizens, and so you pay half, we pay half, and keep it going that way, so that way you're raising it up as it goes. On the, the carbon, the decarbonization study for the Charlottesville Gas Utility, this has long been an issue, and I'm glad to see C3 and the city working on this together in a proactive way. I'm not a fan of carbon offsets for all the reasons you started to go into. I think that they're risky, their integrity is questionable, and you would be better off investing the funds locally. You'll create jobs, you'll support nonprofits you already know, it's just reinvesting in the community, it's a really good idea. I've seen it work over the last 20 years directly with grants and things that we do. Besides affordable housing and the cost of housing, I think, you know, and the low minimum wage, I think the next most important thing is the energy burden people have. And so if we can reduce that energy burden by investing in programs that we already have, and energy efficiency is by far the lowest hanging fruit, so anything the city can do to invest in that is great. And I'll close by saying, years and years ago, I was on the mayor's Sustainability Committee, and we proposed a lot of different things, some of which were enacted, some of which are collecting dust somewhere in City Hall. And one of them was enacted is if you reduce your, your homes' efficiency, or increase your homes' efficiency by a certain amount with renovation and things like that, you can get half off your property tax. And council passed that, I did it, it was great, I saved a lot of money, and it helped me do it. And I think you could increase that, or make it multiple years, or there's lots of things you could do to play around with these energy efficiency programs. So I encourage you to keep doing it. Thank you.
Was that reduction for that one year or forever?
Just one year.
Oh.
I tried forever.
Yeah, I was like, wow, that was... Are there others that want to...
Good evening. My name is Gray McLean, I'm a county resident, the director of the Ajivon's Foundation, and the chair of the Community Climate Collaborative, or C3, board. I'm not going to be as eloquent or as relaxed as Jason is. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you for a few minutes about, also about the city's methane gas utility decarbonization study. First of all, I want to quickly thank the council and staff for its commitment to carbon neutrality and the subsequent call for a study to decarbonize the methane gas utility. I also, as was already done this evening by multiple folks, I want to recognize that it is an excellent gas utility, right? That's not in question. I also want to thank staff for building upon what has proved to be a deficient study by exploring additional energy efficiency and electrification measures. With that said, and I heard this from many of you, we must acknowledge that we have a long way to go before we have a path to decarbonization. And I was happy to hear that a lot of you agreed. You have all received or will receive C3's recommendation, I will not reiterate those point for point. Instead, I want to make three comments. First of all, number one is commit to a real plan. I heard this from a number of you as well. Unfortunately, the completed study was not a decarbonization plan, it was a carbon offset plan. After executing upon staff and C3's near-term recommendations and learning from them, I encourage you to develop a real plan for equitably moving our community off methane gas. Execution of that plan will require investment and attribute meaningful decarbonization to energy efficiency and electrification. Number two, again, I heard this, I was happy to hear it, avoid offsets. Offsets are an absolute last resort, and should only be used when our city has exhausted all other decarbonization options locally, and we are very, very far from that point. The climate community in this city would prefer you invest every offset dollar into local energy efficiency and electrification rather than reporting suspect progress through offsets. And finally, number three, I would say to leverage local expertise. Pound for pound, I'm not sure, I think you guys are all aware of this, but our community has the deepest bench professional climate, energy, and renewable energy technical and policy expertise in the Commonwealth, including C3, the Southern Environmental Law Center, Appalachian Voices, and a slew of leading national renewable energy companies. At the risk of offense, I must point out that this is the second climate-related study in a row which has been deeply problematic. I encourage council and the city manager to require that staff consult this local expertise, as well as the city's Sustainability Department, and the definition of scoping of any future climate-related consulting projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
Good evening, councilors. I send you some comments. My name is Chris Meyer, excuse me, city resident, 124 Oakland Court. I am speaking, not my role as the Renewable Energy Alliance Board Chair, nor from the company I work with, which does renewable energy. Obviously, you can only read this moment as a resident. Yes, I think, and I'm sorry for missing your earlier presentation today, but I found a lot of things problematic with the decarbonization plan. I sent a lot of those comments to you. I will reiterate some of my other colleagues' comments I just gave you. You know, the solution is not through offsets. I've been saying this for years to you all, let's not spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, the first trillion, let's spend it here locally. I was happy to see a project I worked on was at LEAP, the West Haven weatherization. It was a great example of spending money locally, utilizing workforce here locally. Some of those residents received training through your workforce economic development program through Mr. Angle here. It was a great example of what can be done, let's do more of that, again, spend the money differently. I'd like to say I love the tree program, it's not a carbon credit program, you're already counting for that for other places. Let's keep on doing the tree program, but please don't claim that it's reducing your emissions. Finally, yeah, I was also struck, and I think it sounds like you all went over this, but you know, 10% annual increases is not sustainable if that was going to be the plan, so we got to figure something else that's not a 10% annual increase in the bills for people to heat and heat their homes and heat their water. Finally, I do want to change course and put my hat on as a school board member, and speaking as an individual as a school board member, I think the schools are probably your second or third biggest client from Charlottesville gas perspective. We saw our school energy use from natural gas go up by 6% between 2011 and 2023, according to your staff. That was not okay. It's not okay if I'm looking at a 10% annual increase in our cost also. I request you respectively, and we've talked about this in our CIP committees before, we need to decarbonize our school buildings. Get the natural gas, the methane out of there, please. Get those appliances out, electrify them, geothermal heat pumps, et cetera, water heaters, et cetera. I don't want to hit hook to an expensive increase in energy costs going forward that this utility is probably going to see. So we'd rather, again, and we've talked about putting solar in our schools, so we have clean energy that's hedged and fixed, and we can keep our costs down and spend that money on educating our students. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other speakers, it's Carol?
Hello, I'm Carolyn Pugh, I'm the policy director at the Community Climate Collaborative. You all have heard a lot from us already, so I'm going to keep it quick and say that I appreciate and support a lot of the comments that were made by council after the presentation, as well as by folks just now in the room. I think a couple of things that I want to emphasize again are focusing on how much folks are burdened by energy costs right now, and wherever we can be redirecting local dollars to help with those costs while we're also addressing climate needs, we need to be doing that, and we need to be thinking creatively about all of the options that we have to do that better. The other thing that hasn't come up a lot is that natural gas is a health issue. Having natural gas in homes is really detrimental to folks' health, it causes increased asthma. There's lots of studies that I'd be happy to send you about that, so thinking about what we're going to do about that in the long term. And then finally, again, and I know that this was mentioned already, but thinking about not wanting to have long-term patchwork electrification, where folks who are, don't have the resources to electrify, don't get to put solar on their roofs, are then left paying exorbitant natural gas bills way into the future. And to be able to prevent that from happening, we need to start thinking now, and I think that a lot of the points that you brought up of short-term actions are really great, and what I would like to see is timelines, figuring out who is responsible for what, how is the city going to do it, and putting more specifics and targets on that so that it doesn't just drop off now that the study has been presented and we all just move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Okay, so we're going to now go to approve of the consent agenda items, and there would be opportunity for others to speak at the end of the meeting.
Consent agenda, number three, minutes, February 18th, regular meeting. Four, resolution to approve reimbursement of $285,861.38 for the Buford Charlottesville Middle School Project, second reading. Five, ordinance for temporary aerial easement for the Verve Charlottesville PUD at 409 Stadium Road, second reading. Six, resolution supporting Kendallwood Friendship Court Phase III redevelopment efforts. Seven, resolution to appropriate funding from the FY24 State Criminal Alien... funding from the FY24 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant for Albemarle Charlottesville Regional Jail, $9,036, one of two readings. Eight, resolution for a special exception permit at 818 to 820 East Jefferson Street. Nine, resolution for a special exception permit at 400 to 426 Garrett Street.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
I move approval of the consent agenda. It's just read by the clerk.
Second.
Can we vote? Thank you. Pass is five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, so I don't have a report because you're all going to get tired of hearing from me later on this evening, but I did invite the director of our Office of Community, our Office of Economic Development, Chris Engel, to present their recent annual report.
Good evening, councilors. Chris Engel, Director, Office of Economic Development. Happy to be with you for a brief moment tonight to give you some highlights of our 2024 annual report, which was just released about a week or two ago. You all should have a copy, a hard copy. If not, it's in your box waiting for you. We have limited hard copies, but most folks are being encouraged to access this via our website and/or through social media. So let me know if you didn't get it, and we'll make sure you get one. But I'm just going to go through a few of the highlights tonight, give you a little teaser, and hopefully that'll encourage you to go read the whole thing at your leisure. But some of you might be wondering why we do an annual report. It's not required. City manager doesn't say, hey, where's your report before you get to go do your next year's plan. But we believe it's useful to pause and reflect every so often on an annual basis and kind of see what's working, what was impactful, what wasn't, and just kind of take a moment to recognize that and actually record it. If we were to create a time capsule, we would want to put some things in it. So this is what we would put in it if we were putting one in there. So we're happy to present, this is our 13th annual report. And got a few slides here that, this was being finicky earlier, so there we go. Okay. Some of the resolutions on some of these are not ideal. They're not expected for you to be reading them in the audience. These are screen grabs from the actual report. So I'm just going to talk through a few of these. You will remember that in 2023, we spent some time doing a strategic plan for economic development for the city, and we launched that in early '24. So we're now into our second year. So '24 was our first year of implementation of that plan. So the items I'm going to highlight for you today focus on each of those five key areas. And to help us remember and always focus on those five key areas, we created this little strategic arrow, this little blue item you see there on the screen. If you come in our office, it's on the wall. We look at it every day and remind ourselves of what those five elements are. So I'm going to walk through an example of each of those that are in the report and give you just a little flavor of that. So the first item, equitable entrepreneurship, was a recommendation from the plan. Our consultant said, you're doing some good work in this space, but you need to be a little more focused on it, and actually would recommend dedicating a staff person to it. So one of the first things we did was we redid a job description and came up with the Entrepreneurship Program Specialist, which is now filled by Keith Grooms. He joined our team a little over a year ago. And Keith is an entrepreneur himself, a Charlottesville native, and was a user of OED services, had engaged with several of our programs over the years. So he knows them from that side as well. And now he's on our team, helping to represent those to the public, and is doing a great job. One of his primary responsibilities is leading a Go Startup program, which is an entry-level course for folks that are thinking about a business in the city, don't know really where to start next, need to be connected to resources. And Keith is leading that. We had a number of folks go through that last year, about a dozen. And the first cohort of 2025 starts tomorrow night. There'll be about eight folks gathered at City Space for the next four weeks going through that program. So that's entrepreneurial entrepreneurship focus. Our next item is innovative growth, and this is really kind of focusing on our existing businesses that are poised for growth, or second-stage-type companies that might grow from 10 or 15 employees to 20, 25, or 30, which is significant for a city of our size. As you know, we don't do a great deal of outbound attraction or marketing by virtue of our small size of 10 square miles. So we spend a lot more time kind of growing our own economic gardening, so to speak, if you will, in Charlottesville. And we do that often in partnership with our folks at the state, so the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. This particular little story highlights a visit with a company called Virginia Diodes, which is quietly growing into one of our larger employers. They've been around 25 years and have a little over 100 employees, doing some very high-tech stuff over at the X facility. So we do a number of visitations throughout the course of a year, and this one was in conjunction with our partners at the state, who wanted to understand a little bit better exactly what Virginia Diodes was up to. So just another example of activity in that category. Pathways for Opportunity is our kind of workforce is another way to describe it, but through our plan, we've elevated that to these pathways for opportunity. And last year, we partnered with The Chamber on a series called The Future of Talent, which was a series about recruiting, retaining, and the future of work, if you will. Six events with speakers over the course of the year in partnership with The Chamber, led by our lead on that, our Workforce Development Program Manager, Jenny Boucher. So just an example, we had about 120 participants over those events, and it's one of the ways that we stay connected with folks, to kind of hear what their challenges are in a little bit different setting, as opposed to just a business visitation type thing. Next one is creative placemaking, which is a little fun and a little different for most economic development groups, but it is critical to the work that we do. And last year, we did a significant effort with the Friends of Downtown, which is a fairly newish downtown business group. And they are largely raising their own funds through private sources, but last year, we entered into an agreement with them to help support them on behalf of the city, and a good portion of those funds went to what was called Magic on the Mall, which you saw over the holiday season with some light displays, which you can see in this photo here. This item will not go away as we're about to enter 2026, which will be the 50th anniversary of the mall. So additional placemaking will likely be taking place related to that, and we're hopeful that we can celebrate with the business community the unique feature that is the downtown mall. Our final element is storytelling for investment, and that's, our consultant basically said, you guys are doing some good things, but people don't know about it, so you need to spread that news a little bit more. You need to visit groups. You need to get more active on social media and the different ways that people consume information. So we've taken that to heart, and we launched a LinkedIn channel last year. We have a little over 900 followers on that at this point. We had a Facebook. We continue with that, and we continue to have a robust website as well. So this little feature just kind of highlighted some of our top posts, favorite posts, like most liked posts, things of that nature. And then one of the more fun, by-the-numbers pages, which we could spend a bit of time on, but I'll just highlight a few items. There's lots of fun facts and kind of nuggets in here if you're interested. Our Go Cook program, which has been around, probably our longest Go program, which stands for Growing Opportunities, had 99 individuals since its inception, and I'm hopeful that this year, we're going to get across the century barrier. I'm certain we have a few of those lined up happening this year. 26,000 web views on the OED page, which was kind of interesting. Most folks spend about 35 seconds when they come and visit, which I understand is a little above average, so maybe they like what they see. There was a lot of talk earlier about electrification, and in our parking garage on Water Street, there are two electric vehicle chargers, which last year had 1,400 hours of charge time associated with them, and that is up, it's about double from the year prior. So just a little fun fact for you that you probably didn't think you were going to hear tonight. In any case, the next item is a little metric, kind of matrix that we've created. Our consultant said one of the ways to kind of track broad overarching themes throughout the city, not things that your office is going to directly make an impact on, but a good way to kind of track the overall health of the city is to follow these metrics and do those annually, stay up to date on those. So what we've done is created a matrix that tracks those. A baseline was 2021. These come out annually. These are all freely available, so we don't get ourselves in a situation where the data is no longer going to be available in the future. So in three or four years, we'll have a nice track record of data here. The green elements are the elements that are staying the same or increasing in the direction that we wish. The red ones are kind of either flat or potentially going down in the opposite direction. So we'll just keep tracking this and posting this for folks to take a look at as we move forward with our plan. And final slide, this is what the front page of the report looks like. You can actually click on this if you had the PowerPoint. It would take you there to a little tool called Issue, which flips you through as if you were holding it in your hands, but digitally. You can access that via our website at that link there. So those are the quick highlights. I hope that's enough to whet your whistle to maybe go and check out the full 20 pages. We're proud of our work. We're proud of the work that we do to support the business community and help it grow, and we welcome your feedback and continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. I serve on Minority Business Council, and Nicole, you served on that as well. And I just like the work that we're doing in that community as well to uplift, you know, all businesses in the community. So great work. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Chris. I think actually, yes, next item?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. The next item, we're at action items now, and it's a resolution approving the performance agreement to support 501 Cherry Avenue redevelopment efforts. And Chris, we have you here to present.
Guess I shouldn't have sat down. Anyway, this item before you tonight is a resolution to support the development of 71 affordable units at 501 Cherry Avenue. Piedmont Housing Alliance and Woodard Properties are involved in this project. This is a performance agreement that uses the methodology that you're familiar with me sharing with you. It's based upon the incremental increase the project creates on the site by virtue of doing the project. So there's a base value associated with the property, which is what it's worth today, and the development is going to create an additional increment or additional value, and we are going to share a portion of that value back with the developer to facilitate the affordability of the housing for a period of years. So in this particular case, we are in agreement that shares 50% of the increment for 30 years, and that helps support those 71 units that will be built on site. The affordability of those units is between 30 and 60% spread across, I have the exact numbers if you'd like them, but spread across between 30 and 60% of AMI. You may recall that last July, you passed a very kind of brief resolution indicating a willingness to consider such performance agreement, and that was to give them the ability to feel confident that they were willing to have city support. This document is the actual document that would be executed between the parties, so it's a little bit more to it, but it essentially codifies what you approved last July when you passed a resolution in support of working on behalf of this project. I will point out and note, and you have heard from others, that there is a capital improvement, CIP, contribution to this project in addition to this commitment. The unique thing about this commitment is it doesn't happen until after the fact, until the units are built and a full year of taxes are paid, and then once the verified units are in place, that 50% of the increment is then shared back in the form of a grant with the entity. So happy to answer any questions you have about that.
And so this is specifically for the housing component?
It is specific to the housing.
With the PHA or?
Yes. PHA is the entity that will receive, PHA or one of their designees will be the entity that will receive the grants. This is a similar...
Is this called a synthetic tip? Is that the fancy word?
Yes, that's a fair characterization, yes.
And Mr. Sanders, this is separate from any consideration relative to the grocery store space?
Yeah, just to make that clear, initially, the conversation that was had was that 501 Cherry was one project. It just featured a grocery store. But after deeper conversations and reconsideration internally, I arrived at it being two projects. So that's ultimately now why we are wanting to make sure that the distinction is clear. This is about the residential housing development portion of the project, and that we are actually, Chris and I have been in conversation, actively researching what we could bring back as a possible contribution towards the grocery store itself, as the Five Hill Neighborhood Association continues to do its work in identifying a potential operator and our chance to review performers.
And we, in terms of our CIP, is there 3 million or 6 million?
For this project, I believe it's 3.1 million that is allocated and set aside for this.
Is that right?
Yes.
We've not invested that yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Interstate Ford, basically, it's a 30-year tax break to help build, you know, the affordable housing at 501 Cherry. Yes.
I have a question. I was looking through the documentation and the approving resolutions. And I'm curious, first of all, why is the Economic Development Authority involved? What do they add to this mix?
Well, the state law requires that it happen in such a manner, so that's...
In order to do what? To do the...
In order to make the grant to the entity. Typically, these are for-profit entities. In this case, it's likely to be, it's a nonprofit, but the guidance is still to go through the EDA to actually make the grant.
So the EDA's participation is necessary because of the tax sharing agreement?
In Virginia, there's rules against what cities can do with regard to this, and the guidance has always been in Virginia, the way to do it is through an EDA.
Right, okay.
The previous versions that we have done, both with, for affordable housing purposes and business development purposes, flow through the EDA as well.
Then, in the approving resolution, on the page one of the approving resolution, down towards the bottom in paragraph two, it says, "It is the current intention of the city council to make sufficient annual appropriation of monies to the authority," and being the Economic Development Authority, "for the purpose of promoting economic development in the city by funding certain financial obligations of the authority pursuant to and during the term of the agreement." Is there a line item in the budget for that? What's...
There is, yeah. So that essentially says the EDA will share the funds that the city shares with it. And there is a transfer that occurs between the city every year and the EDA to write these checks when it's time to do that.
How much of that money is expected to go into this project, if any?
All of it. It's simply a transfer of the tax. So we estimate what the tax is going to be, set it aside, and when it actually comes due, there's a transfer from the city to the EDA, and the EDA actually writes the check to the developer.
So the appropriation being talked about is the appropriation of half of the tax?
Correct.
Supplement?
Yes.
Okay. I was thinking that it was saying that there was some money that we were going to be contributing in this more directly right away. Okay.
No, no. It all happens after the project's developed, after they pay taxes for a full year and the units are verified.
The tax money is yours. You're authorizing it to be facilitated.
Okay, I get it now, yeah. Okay, thanks.
And is that actually how it functions, where it's paid and then given back, or is it just not collected?
No, it is paid and it's given back. That's a function of Virginia law as well.
You're obligated to pay taxes. You cannot be waived.
In Virginia, there's no such thing as tax abatement.
There's like a feedback loop instead of just...
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions? If not, if I can get a motion to approve this, we'll vote on this one tonight.
I move the resolution approving... I move the resolution approving performance agreement to support 501 Cherry Avenue redevelopment efforts.
Second?
Okay, can we vote? This motion passes on 5-0. The next item on is?
Can I just say one thing? First of all, I just want to thank you, sir, and Mr. Sanders and everyone else for your creativity and imagination in getting this done. And other projects we're doing like this, I think it just goes to show when you've got, you know, good intent and you're willing to be creative, it's remarkable the things you can do. So.
Agreed. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution designating Preservation of Affordable Housing Incorporated site at 10th and Wortland Street. Southwest corner is a revitalization area. Alex, hello, sir.
Good evening, councilors. Tonight, staff is presenting to the city council a request by POA, which stands for Preservation of Affordable Housing, Inc. The project is a partnership between UVA Foundation and POA. UVA is providing the parcel of land, which has essentially four parcels and is located at the southwest corner of 10th and Wortland. The area is within the census tract 2.02 and approximately 60%, 60.7% of the residents of the area are below poverty level compared to 22.6% in the city. The applicant is requesting that the city council designate these four parcels at the southwest corner of 10th and Wortland as a revitalization area in readiness for their proposed submission of application for Lytech development to the state. The importance of the Lytech, the importance of the designation is essentially to enable POA to competitively score higher in terms of application scoring and written system by the state agency. The project, it's a mixed-use development. It's going to have a neighborhood scale, commercial components like entrepreneurial development, among other, commercial services. And it's going to include 180 affordable units, ranging from 30% AMI to up to 80% AMI. The estimated cost of the project, if the funding is in place, is $66 million. And it's going to provide construction opportunities and administrative employment opportunities as well. The Lytech deadline, deadline for submission is March 13th. And on that note, I'm going to ask the city council, because this is the first region, if a super majority of the city council is in line with the approval of this project, if you can do it in one region, you know, to enable them to submit their application on March 13th. And the application is consistent with the 2023 Council Strategic Plan Framework for Housing and Partnership and also complies with provisions in the Comprehensive Plan and Affordable Housing Plan. I have a representative from POA who's calling in from on phone. And his name is John Settle. He's going to be available to answer any questions that council may have as well. So staff recommendation is that council consider and approve the request.
Thank you. So I attended the public meeting that they had last week at Mount Zion African Baptist African Church. And what I saw and heard, there's some really great input from the public there. And I know they've been getting it all along. They have a rock star advisory group. I know James Bryant is on it. Who, Ms.?
Howard.
Howard, yes. And gosh, I'm forgetting all the names now. But anyway, they have a great, a great crew that's out there getting input as well and guidance from them. So it's a request that we, is this a public hearing as well on this? That we approve this tonight?
It's not a public hearing.
Right, right. But we can, if there's no discussion?
I'm happy to pass it tonight. A few questions. I'm happy to pass this item because obviously it's pretty straightforward, just to help their low-income housing tax credit application. You know, this is the affordable housing UVA pledged to build. If they're submitting a low-income housing tax credit application, my understanding is UVA has made a decision to not contribute any money towards the affordable housing that they pledged to build. So if they submit a low-income housing tax credit application, they're going to need the city to spend that money for their application to be competitive. That's the case with all Lytech applications. Have we gotten a request from POA in terms of an amount of dollars that we'll have to spend for the affordable housing that UVA pledged to build?
Yeah, initially, they submitted an application for CAF. I think it was for $3 million. And the last discussion I had with them was they are revising that particular estimate. You know, we don't have their last estimate yet. However, just to answer your question, yes, they did submit the application through CAF project.
But I would, yeah. And who knows, but I would guess, you know, a 180-unit project, I could see it being eventually more than 3 million. But no, that's helpful to know, and I think that's just important for the community to understand. And this is not a criticism in any way of preservation of affordable housing or Mr. Settle and their team, who I think have done a very good job. But I think it's important for the community to understand that the affordable housing UVA pledged to build has to be financed by Charlottesville and the projects in Albemarle have to be financed by Albemarle. So their pledge really did not amount to much of anything.
Cave land.
Yeah, I think they see their contribution as the land. I think they also were involved in planning efforts as well. But I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you. And there's. And how is this, Mr. Sanders, is this something on your sort of radar in terms of that investment needing to be made to sort of actualize this project?
I'm not going to speak to what is needed and whether or not it can happen or not. What I'll say is we have had conversation beyond Mr. Ikafuna. Mr. Freeze has also had conversation with Mr. Settle, just going through that particular project design scope and had conversations about what we anticipated the city council's posture to be on a request for funding. I can also share that I've had conversation with university leadership as well, myself, indicating to them the concern that there might be resistance or reluctance by council to engage in funding the project. We plan to have further conversations about that. Ideally, what we have been able to discuss as staff is we see no issue with this revitalization designation because it is appropriate. We also recognize that you all have to make a decision on whether or not the city will directly invest. There are other aspects of what the request is that we are also looking into. But at this moment, we're not bringing forward any requests because at this moment, my budget is closed, as you will hear shortly. And I don't have anything set aside specifically for this project.
So the intent with this particular item tonight is really a FOMO?
Just the designation so that they can move forward with submission of the Lytech application.
And then they're putting, Michael putting together their, I guess, finance stack to do that work as a separate?
Yes.
Right.
An ongoing conversation.
And as I said, I have no problem passing the item tonight. I think it's just important to highlight.
Could I ask just one question? Is this the map that I saw in the packet? It seemed like it included Stacy Hall within it? Is that right? Well, that's, if you look on page 154 of the packet, that's most of Stacy Hall. Which seems strange to me. I don't know. Does the foundation own that or?
Well, this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Map and my clarification.
25 years.
Oh, yes. Thanks.
I have you all this evening.
You're welcome.
One, I want to thank you all for your consideration and for the city's work on this. Alex has done a fabulous job. So UVA will be carving off the back portion of Stacy Hall. So that parking lot area on Wortland will be carved off in the Stacy Hall parcel. And that will be incorporated into this parcel. So Stacy Hall itself will not be a part of what's deeded over to the foundation, but that parking lot area there.
Okay. Yeah, I wondered about that. I looked at the map and I was like, that can't be right. There's a lot of stuff in Stacy Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, we did not get that lucky.
Okay.
So is it time to pull the councillor Oshren on this particular?
Let's do it.
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve this tonight.
Second.
Okay. All right, John. Thank you, sir. Thank you too, Alex. So the next item on the agenda is ordinance amending memorandum of agreement and its corresponding ordinance authorizing a grant for public funding to subsidize the first, South First Street Phase Two redevelopment project of the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority. Did I get it right, John?
We tried to get it as concise as possible. Good evening, council. Antoine Williams, Housing Program Manager with the Office of Community Solutions. The item before you pertains, as Mayor mentioned, the reauthorization of funding for South First Street Phase Two. The need for this reauthorization occurred in that the project, that there were project delays. And the construction was initially articulated in the agreement, MOA and original ordinance, to start on September 30th. As that did not happen, and since no formal extension was requested or extended in time, the MOA and the ordinance authorizing the funding actually became void. So we're here before you tonight. There's no funding change. It's the exact same amount that was approved in July 2024 as referenced in ordinance 2-24-089, as referenced in your packet. There are key updates to the items specifically around the project deadlines. Specific date is that construction will start July 1, 2025, and complete by July 31, 2027. Anything that pertains to the project needing an extension will require 30 days notice in advance. At this time too, we also took the opportunity to, in clear detail, write some language that will help manage collaboration and coordination between the city staff and CRHA. Some of that again is around compliance reporting, specific to construction progress, financial expenditures, and maintaining compliance with other Lytech HUD regulations as it may relate. We also, in more direct detail, included language around enforcement around non-compliance. In a three-step mechanism, step one being that there will be a 30-day period to correct. Step two pertains to potential suspension of future funding until compliance is documented and provided to staff at CRHA. And then a third step with a potential termination of the agreement. These are pretty standard mechanisms that staff has discussed with our grants team. And we are applying these type of mechanisms across various compliance and monitoring efforts. So you may see more formal effort to include that language in other agreements in the future. So just wanted to inform you on that. Also, specific to some changes is that previous language in the agreement that pertained to a 5%, I forget how we framed it. Was it a?
Retainage?
Retainage, yes, thank you. That language has been removed to comply with bonding rules. That's pretty much it for the summary. Staff's recommendation is that you reauthorize the ordinance and revise the MOA. We do have executive director for the CRHA here and other members of staff that have been involved with this process to get this language updated and back in front of you for reconsideration.
And before you consider the item, I would like to just add that there's an element of why the conditions are worded the way that they are and are added to this agreement. It is not meant to be an indication of a lack of support or anything of that nature. But it really is about the fact that we are going to use tax-exempt bonds to move forward as often as possible so that we can save money. And the use of tax-exempt bonds comes with a shorter window. So we have to be very, very critical and diligent and very focused on the idea that our starts have to start and we have to finish by a deadline. So that's the reason and the rationale for why you hear the language there. More of our agreements will be saying that. More compliance conditions will come up. People don't necessarily like that, but I'm just sharing that with you as that's how I roll. So that's why it's there.
Well, I feel like after the first three items, action items, we are finance experts, you know, now. But I know we're going to hit a budget, so we're going to be, get our PhDs then. So are there questions on this? And I think it's a request that if everyone is supportive of this, we can put on a consent agenda item for the 17th. But I'll start with you, Lloyd.
I'm fine with it.
Fine with that.
Just any background as to the delay?
John is here can speak in specific details. In general, the highlight was around construction delays.
Just construction stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, sorry, we had about an $8 million gap that we needed to close. And so we went through a couple of different cycles of pricing and worked with contractors to try to get pricing down. And then we've had delays with getting final HUD approvals. And so we are at the tail end of that, and we should be submitting our survey questionnaire for closing, hopefully in the middle of this month. So we're expecting a fairly quick start.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
Where, my only question is where things are now, you know, do you assess realistically that July 1, 2025 for starting construction and July 31 of 2027? That do you feel confident you'll be able to deliver on those timelines?
Yeah, we should be able to deliver on those timelines. And all the funding, the bond issue piece will, all the funds will be fully expended by that point. The way we have structured these deals with our budget is using the city money and donor money upfront because the construction loans, of course, add debt, which adds cost to the project. So we try to hit the construction loans towards a tailwind or after we've used all the money from donors and city local money. So I do think we'll hit the deadline.
So there's no other questions on this? So you okay? So if there's no other questions on this, first, if we support this, we can put on consent agenda for? Oh, yeah.
Can we do this in one reading?
We can. Is there?
We would love to because like this is holding up closing, so we had to come back to get this. So all the agreements have to come in with closing because all the banks want to see that you have the money commitments. And so since this agreement had expired, it's now holding up the closing for South First Street. So if you could, that would help a lot.
I think this is twice in one night, councillor Oshren?
Let's do it again.
This is your lucky night.
Yes.
Motion to approve this agenda item with a super majority tonight.
Wave second reading?
Yeah, wave second reading, wave consent agenda. It'll get handled.
Okay.
So good.
Seconds.
Second, so we vote? Okay, John.
One other thing. So at the next meeting, you'll have the Sixth Street agreement because that also expired. And so that has, we'll have to go through the same thing. That is about a month and a half away from South First Street Phase Two and closing. So have a little bit more time, but not that much.
Good. Thank you.
We've seen you again.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So the next item is now, those were the last of the action items. We're now into our business. We're going to have Dr. Gurley to present the school board budget. Dr. Gurley, we were at Walker last week, and I just learned so much about your family name and Gurley and Gurley. So I just.
Absolutely. And we're going to tag team this. I have Ms. Dooley here, our school board chair.
Yes.
Are you driving?
I think.
Maybe.
Am I driving with this?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right.
Wonderful. Well, good evening.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. Uh as Dr. Gurley said, my name's Emily Dooley. I'm the chair of the Charlottesville City School Board. And we're here this evening to present to you our budget. Maybe, there we go. Um so our uh plan of attack for tonight is to first highlight some of the achievements of our division. Uh overview of our budget priorities, uh and then we'll launch into the details of our school operating budget. Our school capital projects and how we hope to work and move forward together. Alright, so um oftentimes, press and posts get caught in far less newsworthy and negative stories. So if you'll indulge me for just a few minutes to highlight some of the accomplishments um that are taking place in our schools. Um you've got lots listed there uh on the screen, um but I wanted to take a moment to draw attention to a few additional ones. Um we have several teams and athletes that are playing this week in state tournaments, including our girls' basketball team that tipped off. Oh, about thirty minutes ago at seven. So if you see folks in the audience checking their phones, they're just wanting to know what the score is. Um Mayor Wade, as you noted, uh in the last month, uh our students have celebrated and recognized and learned about Black History Month. And a special thanks to you uh for participating in some of those celebrations last week. Uh our C Will organization uh has been introducing all elementary school students to athletics. Um our Beaufort Orchestra students just had a great success in the Junior Regional Orchestra Competition. Our Charlottesville High School Drama Students just finished a really successful run of the musical Les Mis. Our K Tech students hosted the Skills USA Competition last month. Uh where many of our community industry partners came to judge our students and provide feedback and also engage them uh in mock interviews. LMA had a family engagement event last week that was full of really good food, if you had a chance to stop by, uh as well as great fellowship. Um and LMA recently was the recipient of the Excellence in Civic and Community Engaged Partnership Award. Uh which is a result of our partnership with the University of Virginia and their Youth Action Lab. Uh so we are surrounded by a lot of noise and unease. Uh and in moments when that becomes a little bit overwhelming, or if you start to question your role, I would encourage encourage you to look to the accomplishments of our young people. Um as it really is a great um way to remember the why behind our work. So Dr. Gurley is going to be covering the detail um of our budget proposal for twenty twenty six. Uh but I wanted to thank members of council and staff, uh city staff for engaging with us early in this budget process. And really taking the time to truly understand the work that we are tackling in our schools. Uh as with the city budget that we'll hear more about later this evening, um Charlottesville City Schools, um our proposed budget is. Uh a reflection of our priorities, uh and as such, our requests are tied to our strategic plan. So first off, our primary goal is as a school system is to increase academic achievement. And to ensure that all students are provided with a rigorous academic experience. Uh as a result, you will see requests tonight for positions that directly support students who need something beyond what is provided in the traditional classroom setting. Please also remember that the state has changed its measures of accountability and accreditation. And that the reports this fall may try to paint a picture of our students and teachers this that does not fully capture the complexities of student progress. Especially in historically under-resourced schools and those serving high need populations. Uh we recognize, however, that we cannot tackle and make strides towards academic excellence until our students and staff are well. Uh one effort to do so is to ensure that our schools have counselors, social workers, social emotional support counselors. School and clinical psychologists, restorative justice practitioners, CSAs, uh and other professionals from partner agencies. Um our third uh strategic plan priority is about supporting our staff. We are really excited to be the first division in our area to adopt a collective bargaining resolution with our certified staff, our teachers. Uh we are weeks away from voting on the first negotiated contract with the Charlottesville Education Association. And our support staffer up next, uh in the next few months, uh we will um begin the process of uh engaging. In um establishing a contract with those employees. Uh and we believe as a school board that this work brings us closer to truly recognizing the value that our human resources bring to our organization. Uh for our students and our broader school community. And then finally, uh as you know, we have engaged in lengthy discussions about ensuring effective and efficient operations of our school division. Um I think we're all in agreement that like any relationship, uh our two bodies will benefit from ongoing work um around refining our processes. We look forward to collaborative reviewing the shared agreements that Mr. Saunders brought up at our last meeting. Um and examining closely uh any revisions that we can make to our funding formula. We remain hopeful that council will see the need to increase the budget for our school priority improvement projects. And also consider using surplus funds for items that were identified in our safety audit. The incredible lift in work in opening Charlottesville Middle School will continue this coming year. But as a community, we cannot let that be the last large scale modernization to occur in our school division for the next fifty years. There are significant conversations ahead of us as we commit to sustainability, as you heard about earlier this evening, in modernization of our facilities. I'll pass this over to Mr. Gur- or Dr. Gurley, excuse me. Um but have been reflecting recently over the notion that at this moment in history. Uh the moral imperative of public education could not be bigger. So that on behalf of my colleagues on the school board, thank you for engagement with us as we collectively work to provide for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley. Um I will now um talk with you about our operating budget. I don't know if this is.
You can just say next slide.
Next slide, thank you.
The batteries maybe died. We've been having issues with it all night.
Um so as we've talked about before, salary and benefits make up um the large majority of our operating budget. Um and so as you see um outlined here on the screen, um we've done some work and included. Collective bargaining, uh work from our collective bargaining negotiation. Uh collective uh compensation remains the top, one of our top priorities, as you heard from uh Ms. Dooley. Included on that first line, you will see that uh from our negotiations, we've done some work to smooth out our scales. We had some unevenness and some steps for our teachers. Um through the work, we have um made the steps one point uh even them out to one point five. And then in the next line, through our collective bargaining negotiations, uh what you see is a, an annual raise. I'm not doing touching this thing at all. What you'll see is there's a, uh what you'll see is there's a annual increase in the contract of five point five percent. Which is um a step of one point five and a raise of and a raise of four. Additionally, you will see that the remainder of our staff will get a three percent raise. Um a three percent salary increase. We've had some, we were, when we met with you all in December, we were projecting a much larger increase to our health insurance. We were anticipating it to be around nine percent. Um since that time, uh we did come back. Um they did, our insurance vendor did come back with a um smaller, uh with a smaller number, which we were very happy. And so we, uh our increase will only be six percent. And then we do have some one-time savings of some work um through VRS. And so you'll see that our um net increase for salaries is three point five million dollars. Next slide, please. Um so our nondiscretionary work, uh one thing, uh one of many things that we continue to do well. Is our collaboration and partnership with our city, uh with our city colleagues. And so through that work, we've done uh with our maintenance contracts. We were anticipating a much larger increase with transportation. We've gone back and collaboratively done some work there, um that will not have any adverse impact to our students. And so there, um when we first talked, we thought that increase was gonna be a lot larger. And now that increases uh is four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And then through our continued ownership of K Tech, um there's some work with technology. And then there's some shifting of slots from Albemarle. Um so our net increase for um our nondiscretionary funds is six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So as Ms. Dooley um shared with you all with our um our priorities, our strategic priorities for our budget. Um we always want to ensure that we're um keeping in the forefront the supports that we're putting in places. Um to ensure that our students are successful. Um that first line reflects that we continue to have to be innovative. And support our English language learners differently. Um in that line, you will see that there is an increase of three FTEs, um three teachers. And you see the associated cost. Um additionally, there is um the addition of a family engagement liaison. As we talk about um what makes a student successful, it's about ensuring that we are engaging our, um we are engaging our families. Um and and there's a aside to that, that the current family engagement coordinator also serves. And she serves a dual role as a restorative justice educator. Uh and so this will allow, um this position will allow someone to focus solely on the work of engaging our families. While also allowing Ms. Bianca Johnson to do the dual, to do a dual role and serve um our students and families differently. And as the restorative justice and family engagement coordinator. Um we have been talking about how we differentiate our support for our students. And so we know that that is through the continued support of reading and math specialists. And so this, these positions, we will um will be itinerant. They, we will house them at the um, they will be central office positions that will be deployed at schools on a year-by-year basis. And they will, those positions will move based on our student data. So um as our students, as our students um achieve and grow in at one school. Then the position could then subsequently move to a um a different school.
So, sorry, can I interrupt real quick?
Absolutely.
So just to clarify, the the person in that position might be at Summit all year, but then the next year at Jackson Villa, not.
Yes.
On Wednesdays there, Jackson Villa, on Tuesdays there.
They will be at a school, they'll be at a school for a year. They could be at the same school two years. It depends on the data. Uh but right now, we um, right now, we're saying that that the person um in these positions will serve where the greatest needs. And and we find that that model to be more equitable, because everyone doesn't need the same things, uh we need to go where the highest needs are. And we started a little bit of that model this school year.
Okay, and with these two additional positions, are there, are there already those? And these are two more, or is it two total?
Yes, these positions already exist. Um this school year, um we added an additional, um we added an additional math specialist. To Summit Elementary School because we knew that the need was higher at that school. And this is taking that same approach, um but we're just doing it. We want the people, um the persons who take these positions to know that they're itinerant, that they will move year to year. Sometimes people get really, all of our schools are great, um and so they get really wedded to being at a school. And it gets really hard to move people when they think that that's their forever place. Um so we're ensuring that they know that they are, they are itinerant. That's a great question. Thank you. Uh next, we have the um health and medical sciences. One, um one of the many ways we we know that we must serve our students is by giving them um multiple opportunities to be successful. Um I believe that the greatest day, the most important day in a child's life is not graduation, it's the day after graduation. Um because they have a plan and they know what's next. And this is our way to ensure that students, um they can select the fine arts or they can select health and medical sciences. And this could be um also a precursor to go into K Tech, to be in the nursing program. And so position, um courses under health and medical sciences include like um medical terminologies. Um health and um medical coding, those types of things. So this, for the upcoming school year, it starts off at a half-time FTE. And then the subsequent year, it will become a full-time FTE. Um we are, we were fortunate enough to bring over uh Ms. Renee Duval. Who uh who had been on the city side for a while as a transportation coordinator. Um she came over to the um public school side, um doing the same work. But she actually had a greater reach because she was doing a lot of the buffering of the work that was getting in the way of some of our building level folks. Uh and she still is very connected to the transportation side of the house. Um we um have clinical social workers who we have on some money that's um expected to expire. We um, what you see reflected here is we're beginning to shift some of those positions over into the operating budget. Um you heard Ms. Dooley say that students must be well in order for us to serve them well. And so this is our continued commitment um to moving those positions, um to move those positions over. Um as you know, we are building an amazing building. We're uh, an amazing building is going up over there on the campus of Beaufort, Charlottesville Middle School. Um and the Walker School is closing. And um our principal, who is doing a dynamic job, um is having a hard time holding people in. Because that building is going to dissolve and people are worried about what's next for them. They can go work anywhere, smart people can work anywhere. And so uh what you see reflected here is a one-time bonus. So that they can stay with us in that building and then transition the year after um to their new spaces. And so that was added after we uh met with you all the last time. And so that is a um, that's a one-time bonus that will be um divided into two equal parts. And so you see um that has a cost, um those additional student supports have a cost. Um the associated cost is one point two million dollars. And I forgot that we were adding a recruit, I missed that, we were adding a recruitment specialist. To just continue to bring on the the good talent, uh whether it be our qualified educators, support positions. Uh there's this constant need for someone to continue to s- to focus on the work. And it's a very tiny department, um doing a lot of heavy lifting. Uh next slide, please. Here you will see, um you see our reflected uh budget changes. Um so it reflects everything that I just discussed, um for an increase of um four point nine million dollars. Is what we are um asking you all to um adopt in your um operating budget. Next slide, please. Uh and here's a summary, um this is a summary of um all the changes presented. Um incorporated into our general funds and our special revenues, um and that's all presented here. Next slide, please. Uh and so we're gonna speak, uh we're gonna speak about our capital projects. He can go on. Um so our capital projects, as you all know, they are funded outside of our operating budget. And this is something that I think we have had a lot of discussion on. One, how do we approach this differently? Again, I I keep um applauding our approach that we continue to dr- address this collaboratively. With our um city partners, but ultimately, as Ms. Dooley said, it can't be fifty years before. Uh we address our facilities again. Um so through the ongoing work of our uh capital improvement plan, uh we we just want to make sure that we are addressing. How we um um ensure the safety of our facilities and students. The efficiency and maximizing the learning potential um inside of our buildings. Next slide, please. So when we um, when we curated this slide, we started with that there's one point two million dollars. Uh for the um school priority improvements. And we know that we continue to discuss that that money um does not go very far. Um in this day and time and and we know that um there are many things that are impacting inflation these days. And I would expect that over the next four years, we're gonna continue to be um in uh impacted by things. Um that uh impact uh construction, I should say. And so we've seen an increase of, um so there's been a twenty percent increase. As we've seen with our construction projects. And I know that since we've done this, that I've received, um I've received word that that there is a line item of about one point four million dollars. Now that um is scheduled to be um set aside for these projects. And I think that those are things that are in the, a step in the right direction to continue to address our capital improvement. Um we do know that you all have um definitely leaned in, um we had some restroom. We do know that you all have definitely leaned in, we had some restroom renovations that were really important. One, the modernization, but also for safety and security purposes, that it, the modernization, that restroom modernization at the high school kind of checked a lot of boxes. There's some ceiling replacement that needed to be addressed, daytime lighting enhancements, security vestibules, these are the types of things that are ongoing and very important to, and to ensure that we continue to address these things. Next slide, please. So, several high priority projects, and these are things that have already, some of the things that have already been done, but then there are things that, that also require our attention through our, we recently did the school secure, the school security audit, and so the security, the audit addressed things like lighting and fencing, upgrade marking and parking lots, exterior cameras, sidewalks, to continue to address our vestibules. And I know that Mr. Sanders and I have a standing meeting, and I know that these are some things that we will continue to carve out, and I will pass along to him and his team, in terms of what does it mean to address some of the things and get some of those things quickly off of our, off of our list, in turn, so that we can ensure that we are addressing our students' learning in a safe manner, and so, we will have some conversations about this very shortly. Next slide. And so, as we move forward, I think it's really important that during our last conversation in the joint meeting with the school board and city council, we've talked about just how we continue to leverage data to make some of these very important decisions, how we collaboratively move forward, you know, maintaining the transparency that all of our stakeholders want, through these, through our public meetings, and just making sure that there's trust in our budget development, and then the proactive approach, how we communicate. I, I think one thing that is one of our many glows that we have is our collaborative partnership with our city partners, you know, how we work internally with facilities, with transportation, how the city manager and I work very closely together, so that we are tackling the things that are very high priority things. And so, as we continue to move forward, there's a lot of uncertainty about our English language learners, and, you know, that growth that continues to happen, and one of the big things that's on the minds of, you know, our constituents, our stakeholders, the preschool center, what happens next with that, you know, I recently had a meeting with them last Tuesday or the Tuesday before, and they're like, we don't wanna camp out in this building long when we move all of these little people into this building, because when they, when we consolidate the preschool center, it is not designed to hold preschoolers. So, you know, the worry and what you're going to, you know, I'm keeping them at bay right now, but they want to know, when is that building going to go up? And so, I think we really have to make sure we work through a solid plan for the preschool center, because it's going to meet their needs at the very minimum. And so, having that plan and working very proactively and working very publicly through that is going to be important for everyone. And then, we talked a lot about the funding model, and I know that we're eager to jump into that. I know that the city manager talked at our last meeting about assessing what that looks like moving forward, and I, I think that that holistic view of our funding model is going to be much appreciated by all involved. Next slide, please. And this concludes our presentation. You see the faces. So often, we talk about our students in terms of test data, we talk about them in terms of what they mean per pupil allocation, but these are the truth, these are the faces of who you serve, who we serve, and we say in Charlottesville City Schools, we are better together. Questions?
Lloyd?
I have no questions. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for all your work. It makes me happy to know that there's a lot of good collaboration happening at the level of staff, so thank you for that. I know we've had a couple of meetings with you all directly, and I feel like this is in line with, with that, so I'm very comfortable with what was presented.
Yeah, likewise, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I assume every, every request that you've mentioned is in our budget currently?
Yes.
Except the CIP request.
Except the CIP, yes.
What you said, is it 1.4 versus 1.5, or did it?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
So, yeah, that obviously leaves, you know, not, not too many questions. I mean, the big one is, and maybe it's just not known at this point, the point on like long-term continuing that conversation about what the funding model looks like for how we fund schools. You know, is there any envisioning of what continuing that conversation would look like in terms of strict scheduling a series of work sessions between the school board and city council, or some meetings at a staff level before we get to that point? I'm just curious, just to make sure it doesn't kind of, you know?
Yes, yes, and yes. More to come on that.
Okay.
But that, it's gonna take that, I think that's ultimately, we are scheduled to meet soon, and that's exactly what I plan to talk about.
Okay, great. I don't have anything else, thank you.
Yeah, I just, looks, looks great, and maybe I missed it, but what, can you just tell me a little bit about what you all are doing with K-Tech?
So, in terms of where we are currently? So, we still, we are serving Charlottesville and Alamo Marl students. We do have a significant, we are growing, I shouldn't say significant, we are growing in the number of Louvanna students that we're serving there. At my last meeting with Dr. Hiltz, we are now, we have interest, she met with the curriculum supervisor from Nelson last week, so we have some interest from Nelson to participate in our fire, fire science program, and we also have interest from Madison County to, to send students there. So, we really are becoming the area, the, the A is really, you know, holding a lot of value there, that people see, people see what we bring to the table at K-Tech. Our students are doing amazing things there, Ms. Dooley talked about, we recently got to go, go over to the Skills USA and see that. So, I mean, a lot of wonderful things, and our students are leaving there employed, with employable skills, transferable skills, it's always something great to put on your resume, and they definitely are leaving there with transferable skills. And I'm gonna be pitching in the near future that, you know, we put more money into K-Tech in terms, in terms of refreshing it, the building has not been touched in 50 years. And I think it's going to, with cars going electric, you know, there's going to be the need to reimagine what the programming looks like in that building as things continue to go to elec, electric, and, and so I think all of those things will be prudent to ensuring that our students and the adult learners that come in the evening are competitive in, in this global market.
So?
Finally gonna throw up the dwell tachometer?
What was that?
See, with the changes in all the cars, you're finally gonna get rid of the dwell tachometer?
Oh, yes.
I don't know what that is, but I don't think my car is.
They haven't used it in about 30 years, in tuning cars, but when I was in high school, when I was in high school, that's what you learn about it.
Oh, okay. Thank you guys so much, you guys rock, thank you so much. Sam, so I think it's your turn now. This is all financed, this, this meeting, the numbers, so.
So, Remy, I'm just gonna say next slide, I'm not even gonna try. So, good evening, Mayor, councilors, and members of the public. I stand before you this evening to execute one of the most critical duties I perform as the city manager for the city of Charlottesville. Tonight, I will present to you the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. The cycle for preparing this budget started back in August with our staff. Your 20, your FY26 budget kickoff was held in October, and since then, the budget team has engaged with all offices, departments, regional collaborators, and community-based partners, all in an effort to define, to define the scope and need of opportunity in this, in this community. I first want to thank Budget Director Chrissy Hamel and her team, Brian and Lauren, for giving them many, many hours on this effort, and they really burned the midnight oil, because we were all doing some stuff some nights. Thank you, Jason Vanderver, Todd Divers, Jeff Davis, Chris Engel, and Chris Cullinan, for your work on the revenue projections and the work on your own respective budgets. And I thank my deputies, Ashley Marshall, Eden Ratliff, and James Fries, for their coaching, evaluation, assessment, ideas, and questions, as we work through what is a complicated process with our full team. The directors work with their teams to provide updates on existing projects, define their various needs, and demonstrate the opportunities associated with their wants. I thank all members of my lead team for their, for their professional work that they did for this important function of this local government. Councilors, you routinely hear at this moment, and will likely always hear, that this is a, this was a hard budget. This year, it was a really hard budget. But I'll talk about why in greater detail shortly, but the looming federal uncertainty is notable, and it does sober much of the conversation about elective expenditures, at least for now, and it's part of what we're waiting for. Next slide. So, the budget that I propose to you is based on revenues and expenditures totaling 264,474,183 dollars. The proposed FY26 budget reflects a 4.97% increase over last year, that's 12.5 million dollars in additional money, so over 12 million in new money to address the need and opportunity that I previously mentioned. 12 days ago, I spoke at the Chambers State of the Community, where I provided the economic outlook for the city's perspective. I also highlighted our local, how our local economy is performing. I'd like to revisit some of that information here, just for the benefit of the public. Next slide. Our current year general fund is 252 million dollars, and once all funds are added, including transit, VDOT, and the gas utility, our budget management responsibilities totaled 607 million dollars. Our capital, our capital improvement program is 37 million dollars this year. This budget proposes a 32 million dollar CIP, and that's 189 million dollars over the next five years. Charlottesville's, Charlottesville, Charlottesville's unemployment rate is 2.5% and continues to be lower than the state and national averages, a sign of good health. Our city has seen 3.8% employment growth, an important economic indicator, and also one that leads the state. Next slide. Strong performance in key community indicators influence our assessments and tax collections. The real estate assessment, yeah, I'm looking, make sure this slide is right. The real estate assessment for Charlottesville reveals our average property value at 527,100 dollars, a figure that continues to increase and rapidly. Our local profile for real estate assessments is based on a 40/60 split of our commercial and residential tax base. That means our residential property owners carry a burden to support this local government. We saw a 6.14% increase in commercial assessments, and also an 8.18% increase in residential assessments. And we are reminded that Charlottesville, a city of 51,743 residents, according to the Weldon Cooper Center, is the second most expensive Virginia real estate market following the DC suburbs. That's more expensive than Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Richmond, Newport News, Suffolk, and Roanoke, and this is all while being the 16th largest city in the state of Virginia. Next slide. The FY26 budget is balanced, because I'm obligated to do so, so again, revenues and expenditures total, a little over 264 million dollars. Next slide. And this budget is based on no tax increase. Tax rates will remain the same in fiscal year 2026, and those are there on the slide for those to remind you of what you're currently paying, and this budget is based on exactly that, and no more. Next slide. Remind everyone that council adopted their strategic framework a couple of years ago, nine strategic outcome areas, plus a commitment to justice, equity, diversity, inclusion. I take those as my marching orders, and I've shared with the staff that is now theirs as well. While all of these outcome areas are reflected throughout this budget, there are significant resources that are allocated, allocated to certain drivers, so I want to spend a little time going through those for you. Next slide. So, FY26 budget drivers are schools, as you just heard, transportation, affordable housing, and organizational excellence. Next slide. Investing in our schools, the city is contributing 4.9 million dollars in increased operating support to Charlottesville City Schools, based on the presentation you just heard, and through some hard work by the superintendent and the school board. This acknowledges the need for critical investments, including the incorporation of the first new collective bargaining agreement for teachers. This budget increases, increases priority capital improvement investments to 1.4 million dollars from 1.25. I think we can get to 1.5, we'll figure that out. This budget increases ongoing maintenance and improvements to 1.3 million per year, up from 1.2. This budget also ensures that the completion of Charlottesville Middle School and Walker Pre-K Center will happen in this five-year CIP. And I remind us all that there is still a deeper conversation, as we've been, we've begun to have, that we need to continue to talk about how we go about investing in our schools and the agreements that we use to manage our relationship. And we hope that the governor is paying attention, and he will pass, allow the one cent sales tax to pass, because that'll help us get going. Next slide. Transportation, this budget supports the continued enhancements at CAT and the pursuit of climate innovation in transit and pupil divisions. The new sidewalk CIP item has been reimagined by Ben Chambers into a full-scale program that you've heard about. This budget fully funds the 5.4 million dollar request to implement the three tiers, shovel-ready, to plan and design, through FY26 to 30. This budget completes the funding plan for the strippling sidewalk, anticipated to be completed by fall 2027. The 250,000 dollar request for the Ravanna Conservation Alliance in, at Riverview Park is also included in this budget, and an additional 250,000 dollars has been allocated to the Parks and Rec Department to plan and design a parking lot upgrade at the same time that this conservation project is done, so that our most popular park in the system gets the full attention that it needs to support our use. Next slide. Affordable housing, that's always our big one. This budget invests 12.7 million dollars in affordable housing, in the affordable housing plan, 53 million dollars over the next five years. There's a million dollars for 501 Cherry, 3 million for the final allocation of the 15 million dollars that was previously approved for redevelopment across CRHA's portfolio. There is the first of three allocations to CRHA for the redevelopment of West Haven, 1.5 million to continue to support the CAF, 1.3 million to begin covering the debt service on the acquisition of the Carlton Mobile Home Park, that's spread out over the next five years, and 900,000 dollars to continue funding the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program that we refer to as CISREP. And there is still 200, 2,000 dollars that is added to what we're already paying in rental and tax relief, so that 202,000 reflects the increase necessary to continue supporting households that would actually lose participation in the program, just because the assessments went up.
And I just want to take this time to point out that applications for rental and tax relief are open today.
That's correct. Next slide. This, this budget recommends the designation of Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless, BRAC, as a fundamental agency, non-competitive, with a commitment of 250,000 annually. This budget recommends the designation of a fundamental agency, non-competitive operating grant of 500,000 annually to support the operations of a low-barrier homeless shelter, operator to be determined. Also included in this budget is up to 1 million dollars over the five-year CIP to replace lost revenues for the Salvation Army, should the Cherry Avenue thrift store be adapted to serve as this low-barrier shelter. Next slide. Organizational excellence, which is our focus internally to ensure we are optimally performing externally. This organization now has two types of employees, affiliated, union, and unaffiliated, non-union. Collective bargaining, we continue to support the, the evolution in managing this organization under this, under collective bargaining. We recognize the existence of our fourth bargaining unit, the largest of the four, for workers in public works, parks and recreation, utilities, and a few in police and fire. This activates four of six bargaining units as authorized by your collective bargaining ordinance as passed in 2023. We continue to evaluate our capacity for managing this new set of priorities, with the addition of two, two support staff, and including a 140, about 140,000 dollars of recurring expenditure, to retain the services of a labor relations administrator and a collective bargaining legal advisor, just the cause of being in that space. In the unaffiliated space, with the application of our comp and, our class and compensation study at the start of this fiscal year... study at the start of this fiscal year, all employees except those that are elected or appointed to their positions were placed on a significantly modified compensation system. Job descriptions were developed for every position in the city. Pay charts were updated, and all positions were placed according to the modern compensation policy. We still have some work to do, but this is a long overdue major overhaul. This budget provides a 2% step increase for all unaffiliated personnel and provides a 1% adjustment to the unaffiliated pay scale, so we remain competitive in the employment market. Retirees, this budget provides a 1% COLA for them as well. For general operations, the December budget briefs highlighted that we were seeing operating costs increase for contracts, software, and other basic mainstays of operations across the entire organization. We were able to absorb all increases to prevent any interruption, and we continue to focus on modernization. So as I head toward the end of my second year as city manager, I am still finding it necessary to assess and evaluate how we do what we do and to correct wherever necessary. This year, department heads partnered with the budget team to reclassify multiple positions versus adding as many new roles with continued vacancies among others. This continues to fuel my conversation with the leadership team where I reference the job of modernization as analogous to turning an ocean liner around in the deepest of seas. Why is it, why is it to ensure, why it is necessary is to ensure that we have a reason for who and how we are helping, what are we doing, when can, when and what are we doing to help, how best to do it, and finally, a recognition of why we do it? The ocean, the ocean liner analogy is my choice because it requires everyone to know their job, to be able to report to their duty station, be aware of their responsibilities in the overall process, and be willing to turn together. Any resistance requires resolution. That's how we achieve organizational excellence. So I share that with you is how I internalize what you gave us as a strategic outcome area. And all of this is necessary internally because we have much depending on us externally. Next slide. Aiding our community. So the Environment Community Fund received, has, is providing a series of recommendations. 66 organizations were recommended for funding of the $2.3 million that's been allocated. We continue to provide safety net resources through the Pathways Fund with a million dollars allocated for that purpose. KIP is being expanded with $85,000 in increased allocation to continue to support employing youth in our community. Department of Human Services has $60,000 added to their budget for emergency hotel programming, and the Home to Hope Direct Assistance has become a challenge for us in that we have identified that the prior year allocation of $100,000 is not enough. Current year allocation has exhausted early this year. We're redistributing program budget funds right now to try to get through the end of this year, and will likely have to add some funds before the year is up. But in this budget, we have increased the direct assistance pot to $150,000 for FY26, hoping that we can actually get through a full year, but things are a little tough out there for some.
So I'm saying, I'm just curious, um, is, um, like, the 150 and, I don't know, the 60, is that included in that $12.7 million?
Yeah, those are all outside of that.
So.
Good catch. In addition, we're doing that in addition to what we're already doing in those big projects. Next slide. So under protecting our community, support, we're, we're supporting equipment to ensure that our police and fire departments are professionally outfitted for emergency response. We continue to prioritize the formation of comprehensive emergency management framework to support our local and regional capacity for supporting the community in times of need. In social services, we added an adult protection services role. In human services, and that is to help with capacity concerns of overworking our staff that we currently have. Human services, we worked with the director to reclassify existing positions so that we can make sure that the right structure is in place for managing the overall department. We have prioritized ADA with $2 million per year to support the implementation of the soon-to-be-released ADA Transition Plan. A variety of increases at ACRJ, Blue Ridge Detention, ECC, and OAR have all been integrated as critical services. Next slide. Enriching our community. Parks and Recreation, we have also added an initial, $500,000 to aid in the, the first steps of realizing the Parks Master Plan, which you will be hearing from our director in the next meeting. And the goal of these funds is to focus on existing facilities with the priority for removing access barriers, and we know that we'll have to revisit this line item in future budgets, as 500,000 is just the beginning, and you'll soon see how much more expensive it is to really invest in our parks. Council Strategic Initiatives Fund, that is your pot of money that you all have not been spending, that I will be working with you to spend going forward. We are adding $140,000 to top this fund off at 500,000, and the goal of that is for us to talk more about how I can recommend to you ways to use these funds so that they don't contribute to the annual surplus. I don't know if you all realize that's what you're doing. Next slide.
Actually, can I ask a question about this slide?
Yes.
Real quick, and I'm sure we'll get into this later, and sorry to interrupt your flow. For the Riverview Park parking lot project, what does that mean?
So there's, they have a desire to make some serious enhancements to the parking lot, because it really isn't big enough for the number of people that go over there. And I think the goal is to expand it, so they need to really evaluate where and how to do that.
Taking up what land?
That's part of what we got to figure out.
When do we vote on that?
We will vote on it when we have someone selected to make that work done, get that work done. We can come back with more information.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, next slide is on, oh, I'm sorry, don't, don't move, Remy, go ahead.
Yeah, I like that last one.
Oh, I forgot that one. I didn't put that in my notes, I added it later. So we're activating, there's $500,000 that is in the CIP. Interim City Manager, Michael Rogers, put that in a couple of years ago. It was there, it wasn't touched. I was too busy last year, in my first year, to even remember it was there, and I'm not letting that happen going forward, and I've already initiated the first expenditures out of this account. But the goal would be for it to be a discretionary account for me to work with individuals who are bringing events, quality of life, attracting visitors, different things that are truly about enriching this community. So they don't necessarily have to be big and complicated, but it's really meant to help those folks that want to help this community, and they really don't necessarily need to go through what is a competitive process and a complicated process, because sometimes we can have some homegrown things that really add value to what it is about Charlottesville that makes it special. So the goal is to try to support that to the best of my ability.
And you said you hadn't spent that 500,000?
It has not been spent previously, but I have already initiated. The first, the first grant is to the Indy Short Film Festival, because that is an economic draw, in my opinion.
Do you anticipate that's a realistic amount of money to spend? That's not excessive?
No, of course not, because I can spend a lot more than that. But what I'm suggesting is that because it was added, and it wasn't really added with the plan, I will take really the next two budget cycles to activate a plan by using it for this year and next year. I've already said to Ms. Hamel that I have no intention of changing that number or adding to it next year. I think I can get through two consecutive budget cycles using that money in a positive way, and then we'll know what the right number is. It may be that I don't need as much each year, but we'll see. It all depends on how things show up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sure it can go beyond it, but.
Yeah.
I was thinking 500,000 purely for like sponsoring events.
Yeah, you can tell me to spend more, I'll do that.
I think, well, nevermind.
But I think we can figure that out. I'm, I'm going to be judicious and say that we, we don't have to have it just yet. Next slide. So under management priorities, these are the boring things about government, but they cost a lot of money, and these are things that are important for us to make sure that we take care of. Our healthcare fund, we're adding $2.4 million. Workman's comp, 203,000. Debt service is $15 million for general fund contribution, that's per our policy. An additional 8.3 million per our policy. These are all important things for us to continue to maintain. They make us strong, they make us healthy as an organization, and it's necessary. So those things are there, we took care of them and made sure that we could cover all of those expenditures as well. And then in our partnerships category, we worked with a, a number of the different organizations to try to make sure that we accepted what was true operational cost increases, and in some instances, we may have said no because we just couldn't make it fit, but ideally, we did do a deep dive, and we'll continue to do that going forward. We have a new multi-year agreement with the SPCA. I just point that out because members of the public, as well as your council members, may remember that we hit a roadblock last year. It was a bit tenuous at times, but we have successfully negotiated peace, and we have a multi-year agreement, and that agreement is in coordination with Alamo County, and we'll continue to work through managing that relationship positively going forward. Next slide. Vacancies, my favorite subject. So you know that as we've talked about the surplus over the years, vacancies have contributed to our surplus, and vacancies has been a sign of some things not necessarily being okay within the organization. We are not where we used to be, we're doing a lot better, we have a lot of positions filled, and we are now probably close, very, very close to a place of being able to say that we're at the right number for what an organization, a mature, healthy organization goes through, and that not every single position is going to be filled at the same time throughout a given year. But we'll do our best to try to make sure we get as many of them filled as possible. So we continue to work on filling our vacancies to reduce the contribution to the annual surplus. Some critical positions that were added this particular cycle, the zoning inspector/urban forester, as requested by the Tree Commission and supported by NDS and park staff, has been added. Public Works will now have a five-person concrete crew to take on more projects internally. That will be a game changer for us. The city begins the compensation, begins assuming the compensation of the Safe Routes to School Coordinator based on a change to the VDOT grant. So we're beginning to recognize Kyle this year, and then we'll absorb the rest of him next year. And the difference is that we were able to trade vacancies in many of these instances to, to limit the potential increase to the overall budget. That's a sign of what we're doing differently. Next slide.
When you say trade vacancies, you mean consolidate in?
We reclassified positions. We had, we had a vacancy in this category that's been vacant for a long period of time. We don't necessarily believe that we're going to be able to fill it. We've lived without it, in some instances, we've lived without it for a long time. So the offer that I made was, what could you do with that position before I take it from you? And some people were motivated in that moment to tell me something else that was a critical need, and I agreed to let them tell me that and not take the position. So trying to be fair. So I'm also wanting to just highlight briefly a couple of things beyond our basic budget. ARP is the funds that many of you will remember that we've been able to receive from the federal government, gone are the days of free-flowing cash from DC. So we have spent the money, much of the money that we were allocated over the two batches of how that money came in. We have about $3 million totally encumbered right now, which means it is earmarked for specific purposes, in some cases, in the hands of partners, and it must be expended by December of '26. We are obligated to do so, that is the, the wind down of the federal program. We don't have any flexibility, really, on how to reuse that money, so the partners that we work with, we work very diligently, diligently with them towards the end of the year to make sure that they could spend the money as it was allocated to them, because we're only going to be able to make slight changes, and anything that does not get spent according to the remaining term that we have and following the guidelines will have to be sent back. And everyone received the message from me, I don't like to send money back to the federal government. So the goal is for us to try to spend every dollar that we have. We also earned about $1.3 million in interest that we have not brought forward to work with you on spending, but it is ours to spend, and it is flexible. So that is another opportunity for us to do something significant in regards to the transformation ideals of what ARP was about during a very difficult time for this country. Next slide. The FY24 surplus, you see that slide has, go back, Remy. That slide has nothing on it, because I'm not proposing to spend a dollar of it still. It is important for us to just take our time as, as we move forward. We do have a $22 million surplus. The CIP contingency placement is the official place to hold that money, so that is where it sits today. Critical expenditures are being defined, as we usually have some expenses that remain after a budget year. That's a normal process that we always come, where we have identified that there is an opportunity for us to make life a little bit easier for managing the budget going forward if we take a one-time cash injection out of the surplus to put it into whatever line items. Ms. Hamel is working on that right now. We met earlier today to have that conversation, and the goal will be to prioritize those, so that'll be the first thing that I'll bring to you, asking to begin spending the surplus. But I am going to continue to resist the notion of spending this money, to pause it, continuing to look at it as, we need to hold on to it and give our, our people in DC a little more time to work out whatever it is that's causing us to be in this state that we're in, and see how those changes, proposed changes, actually make impact. What are going to be the changes that we're probably going to have to live with, and we need to be able to have the flexibility? So I would like to continue to look at the surplus as a way to patch a hole that is formed by a change that comes our way from the feds. Next slide. Which is why I call it Fed Watch. So we're paying attention, we're looking at everything that's happening, reading, I don't know how much stuff. It is very unpredictable right now. It's, it's very difficult to determine what is likely to happen. We're beginning to see that some things are more likely to happen than other things, but we do expect impact, and we do believe that there will be damage to mitigate. We're not just looking at the federal government changes, but there'll be state changes as a result, and we know that that means we will get hit twice. We have about $15 million that we've identified in this local budget that is originating from the federal government. I'm sure that number is undercounted at this point, because we know that some things came from the state, and they were originating from the federal government as well. So those are important things for us to not lose sight of, that we've got to remain very diligent in how we do what we do, and we've got to be very disciplined in how we spend this important money right here, because we know it is flexible, and it can help us get out of any bind that is created by others, not just by us. Next slide. And here we are with what's next, as what we will begin to do with you. So I have presented the budget to you tonight. Beginning Thursday, we unpack it for you. I have said to each of you that a good, responsible process would be for the city manager to bring you a budget that you resist changing.
Leading suggestion.
The goal there, because if I've done my job, I've listened to you, I've asked you repeatedly to share with me what your priorities are, and I've been able to reflect that in this proposed budget. I do hope in the unpacking process that we find that each of you are satisfied with what you see, being the priorities that you identified. We can debate, of course, on the amounts of what that needs to be, and maybe make a few adjustments here and there, but ideally, I do believe that I have submitted to you a budget that reflects your priorities, and some critical requests that you've made are all in there. So we will move on through the rest of our process, and I will share with the public that also in conversation with council leading up to this process, because we would have had to do it this week, we did not advertise a tax increase, so that part of the budget question has been answered. We will work within the $264 million that is available, and hopefully, we can move through this process and not have any burns or any arguments about what we need to do to make everybody feel happy when we adopt it on the 14th. Next slide.
It's no turning back.
No turning back. Okay, so thank you for that. That is my presentation, and happy to take any questions or clarify anything that you may have.
Yeah, Brian, you want to?
Seems pretty good, Sam.
I'll try.
Yeah, I mean, all the things you listed there, look.
We'll read it and then see what you think.
Except the parking lot.
Yeah, you don't have to dig into it, yes.
The high points.
The high points were meant to make sure I was reflecting you in all of that.
No, I, I, I've got a really positive feeling about this, so thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Heavy.
It's a lot, yes.
Natalie, do you have any?
Yes, no, thank you for the, the overview. I know we're going to get a lot more detail when we go into things. There's a lot that goes into this process for many, many months, and many, many people, and really good brains that have put this together. So I, I am, um, positive going into this conversation over the next couple of weeks with the, with the work sessions. I liked seeing the sidewalk money that you talked about, of course, and funding the infrastructure projects. They're great because it's not just useful, but it's also visible, and so people can actually see what we're doing in, in this building. I don't love the parking lot, but we'll talk about that later. Thank you.
I'll make sure we get you more information.
If you're talking about expanding bike parking, that's a whole different story.
I'm sure that, I, I suspect that there's more involved in just parking spaces, it's probably for bikes too, but we'll make sure that we get clarity.
Thank you.
Michael?
On the, the transportation side, I'm assuming that means funding's not included to restore CAT to pre-pandemic service in terms of number of drivers?
No, we don't go back that far. We are still working through filling positions that were added last year, just through normal matriculation of trying to get seats filled, it's been a little bit more difficult. I think that is kind of reflective of the idea that there are only so many bus drivers in the community, and we have multiple people driving buses around here and need, so UTS, JHON, as well as the city. And I think that is probably kind of bearing out a little bit as to why it's been a little more difficult. We're going to have to push harder on that if we're going to try to catch up, and it could be that the market is speaking to us, but we don't know that just yet.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's just important for the community to understand that in terms of what we funded, we are not only not making progress on expanding CAT, we're not even back to where we were pre-pandemic.
And what I would add, just for, just kind of clarifying really where we are, we, we've fall back a little bit in the, the cost. bought back a little bit in the, the cost locally, because we also won't realize any more federal money in the flexible federal money that came. There was CARES money allocated to CAT directly. That's over as well. What that did was it allowed the city and county's contribution to be suppressed, so that it didn't have to go up as we were making changes. That ended with this budget cycle. So our local match went up, and the county's local match went up, and it wasn't a small amount of money.
And so if the limiting factor is bus drivers, and we allocated money last year for eight positions, and those haven't been filled yet, allocating more for this year?
Would just mean that we would have vacancies contributing to the surplus. I couldn't do that for a number of reasons, but ultimately, it was, we just need to continue to focus on what it is that we need to do differently. James is working with Garland on a regular basis, trying to figure things out. I think we're gonna try to see if there's some other things, maybe we could do different kind of recruiting efforts and things like that. But yeah, it's, it's a challenge just to be able to get to a point where all seats are filled. We just haven't had that.
And then in the long term, CARTA exists now.
Correct. So that ongoing conversation about what the regional approach is could actually lead to some changes that we might propose to.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Lloyd?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're good. On the surplus, are you envisioning any sort of rough timeline for when we might look at allocating any of it? Is it after the debt ceiling is resolved, or just completely TBD?
Yeah, you're kind of reading my mind a little bit. That's what I'm waiting on. Just kind of see how that conversation goes, because if, if we punt this in a dramatic way, then that just means the uncertainty is gonna last that much longer. We could be another six months trying to wait before the end of the federal fiscal year. So I'm trying to be conscious of that. I'm patient, but I don't want to just delay for the sake of delaying. We still may be able to do some things, but Chrissy can tell you that I've been asking about every dollar that's been sitting for any period of time. I'm just very focused on the idea that if it's sitting there and it's not being used, I have another purpose for it. So some folks are gonna have to reprioritize and, and kind of get me to recommence leaving it there. So we're looking in the meantime, and that, that will actually surface even more money potentially. I'm not saying there's a lot of that, but we know that there's probably some.
And then maybe this is just a surplus conversation that will wait in that point. Is there any progress in the conversations about kind of backfilling some funding for eviction prevention that both Almarone and Charlottesville would jointly do if they were to do it?
Now, you're beginning to see why I put money in your Council Strategic Initiatives Fund. So yes, there's a way for us to look at that. I, I have a series of requests that fell outside of the budget cycle. I shared with you all that I was going to consider, is there a process for off-cycle? I did not develop one, because I think that just makes it harder for us to manage the budget if we're having to take requests all year long. Ideally, what I'm gonna do is bring to you all of the requests that came off-cycle with a recommendation on each one of them, and I will have identified additional pots of money that you might be able to use. They're very small amounts that add up to something substantial that might take one of those things off the list if you so choose. But my goal is to bring them, to bring the opportunity for you all to decide what the priority is. If it's six or seven things, you might pick three and be able to do that, and, and that would be based on how you feel about each of those proposals.
And finally, I, I know I'm likely alone on this, and the ship has probably already sailed, but I'll just state for the record, I think it would behoove us to have some flexibility. I'm not saying we do or don't do it, but advertising a higher tax increase, just because I think the federal environment is in a crisis moment. A lot of the things that people maybe optimistically thought is just talk in 2016 will now happen. And at least in some forecasts by the Fed, we get in a recession, pretty devastating cuts to Medicaid. Congress is debating eliminating tax-exempt bonds being available for municipalities. Just a ton of things that are gonna create a lot of disruption in our community, and I think it would just behoove us to have some flexibility, which I know we're doing by saving the surplus. But for anything that would be a permanent, ongoing expense, I just think that flexibility wouldn't be a bad idea, given the uncertainty, because I think we know there are gonna be some pretty life-altering disruptions for many people in our community.
Sure. And I, I do appreciate that, and, and I only concluded what I did in preparing this budget without tax, without a tax increase, with the full knowledge that we have the surplus, and that I believe that we can manage that surplus to cover whatever you would have considered as an increase in taxes, because it's there. It's just one time. That's the difference.
But not for recurring expenses?
I know. That's right.
I'm done. Thank you.
Lloyd?
Yeah. This, this budget that you're proposing, of course, is the, is the budget that will take us up to July 1st, 2026. And that gets us to the 250th anniversary of signing the Declaration of Independence. It gets us to the 50th anniversary of the mall. We have talked, sort of in general, in a general sense, of how there might need to be something that the city should be doing on that. Is there anything in your budget where you've either left a hole there that might, might be used, or that, where is it actually a plan?
That's what that discretionary fund should take care of. But yes, I did consider that, and I think we may have an opportunity. We're working on pulling a committee together, internal committee together, to really think about what that could look like. We definitely want to celebrate the mall, for sure. That's easy. But the 250th anniversary, because of our history and our connection to that, I think there's a reason to mark that occasion as well. So we're definitely planning a few things, and we'll, we'll just say, stay tuned, and we'll be making announcements shortly.
And the second sort of question I had is sort of related to that, is aside from this question of marking the anniversary, there were a number of specific proposals made about things we should be doing and money we should be spending on the mall itself.
Yes.
Is there something like that in here?
So we have already, there's some, some money for the mall in different places. There's still some work to do on really prioritizing the mall and organizing that. Some of what is in the surplus, I will say to you, if I had to go to the, the things that go beyond what Chrissy's gonna be identifying as critical operational needs that we will have as the first batch. The first set of things to follow that would be about the downtown mall, and really about the experience on the mall, and it does tangent, tangentially touch our homeless issue, and the fact that we have a need for a better presence, a consistent presence, a caring and concerned presence that can actually make a difference in what we see people dealing with there, connecting them to services. So the prior conversation that you had, that I had with you about an outreach team, mall manager, all those different concepts about just kind of caring for our amenity, that would be what I would bring to you in more of a pilot proposal. It wouldn't fit in the budget, so I didn't force it, but I knew that we had the ability for that to be more of a bridge to another budget cycle, where we actually could then prioritize it for recurring. And then I, I believe that there are some ways that we can move some things around that we currently have to begin doing more work on the mall itself.
Thank you.
On a kind of larger scale, that same thing, if we are anticipating a lot of tourists coming, either during a particular day or chunk of time, we also probably are gonna want to get transportation involved with what we can do to prevent everyone renting a car or driving to town, like shuttles to the airport, shuttles to Monticello, something like that.
I think that's part of why we know that, bringing our internal team, we have so many connections naturally among the group that works with us, but there's some ways for us to plug in with some other efforts and see about planning some events. I can see a bike ride around the mall area, not on the mall, because no wheels on the mall, but other things that we could potentially do. And I think we want to highlight, if you're coming to the city to celebrate this moment with us, let's give you something to do. I think that's really what I would imagine, having Chris's team and Afton's team kind of putting out there, if you're planning a visit, here's a few things you can consider doing in the summer of 2026.
And I'm just thinking about even the weekends when UVA students move in and out. The traffic is gnarly, and if it's on an even bigger citywide, countywide scale, what we can do to prevent people from relying on cars first would be good.
Sure.
Speaking of that, there is like a regional anniversary group which I'm, I'm on, and so it's a lot of individuals that's doing different things. So Courtney Caucasian is chairing that, I think, for this area.
Yeah, I think, I, I believe we talked about actually having Courtney come and speak to us as a group, so we can make sure we plug into the right things.
Lloyd, are you, are you finished? I just had a couple of questions or comments. If you can go back to your slide about affordable housing?
Okay.
The one that showed 12.7, I think?
That, back one. There you go. Thanks.
Okay, so I understand, if you can go to the next slide. So is this also, is that included as part of that 12.7? So the reason I'm asking all this is because I've been telling people, you know, we, we're putting $10 million aside. We're actually probably doing more, like 30, 40% more than, than not, than the $10 million. And, and it just shows the commitment that we're doing to kind of address that, which you mentioned, that we're number two market for affordability, or, you know.
Kind of the reason why I'm showing it to you.
Yeah, so it would be interesting to, if you could maybe have staff to look at, if it may be already available, looking at like the 51,000 residents, the 12, 13 million dollars that we put aside for that of local funds, how does that rank? It would be good to know how, how we look with our other cities.
Our peers. We outpace our peers, I can tell you that without even doing any research.
I know we're always hitting the bottom of our weight class, yeah.
Yes, we are. But we can do that. Antoine actually will be back in April, I believe it is. He has his, his annual affordable housing report, but we can make sure that you get that context as well.
That, that type of information really helps me when I'm talking to residents, neighborhood groups, and things like that, like why, and I, I know why it's important, but.
Sure.
And the, the last I heard from the Office of Community Solutions, this is about a year or two ago, I think we had the highest per capita in Virginia, the highest on the East Coast, except for maybe DC.
Yes.
And then a couple of years ago, we actually spent more locally on affordable housing than the entire state of Virginia did in the statewide Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So to your point, we are major leaders.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
That's what punching above your weight glasses.
That's what it looks like. I don't have any more questions. We, you, I think that you've really heard us, and, and so, thank you. And we still got a lot of work to do.
And I have just one more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because you brought the homeless aside. I just didn't see it. Is it included in the budget, the physical building out of a new shelter, or is that to come in a surplus?
No, that, so that is, is still something we need to work out, because we have to do, we have to have some more conversation. The number is higher than it was originally shared, and that was just a projection at